To the cloud.
Yes. Thank you.
Good one, McCray. Now you have to share the number with Ken's password, so he's got the right password.
Well, I looked at the password that Ken gave me last week.
And that's what I used and it wouldn't let me in.
Yeah, you know, sometimes it can just get tripped up. I find I just have goofy things happen daily. So we're here, we're doing what we need to.
That's good. Thank you, McCray. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the North Saniam Sewer Authority Work Session, Monday, October seventeen, twenty twenty-two. It's it's six oh eight P M. Sorry for the delay. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Woodward.
Present.
Mr. Kirsch.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Nielsen.
President.
Mr. Gander. I am present. I am Janet Zianhall. We have with us Laura or Larry Rupp. I'm sorry, Larry McCray Carmichael and Ann Carey.
And Tony is absent. Any declarations of conflict or of interest? Hearing none. Announcements. Brian, you're waving your hand for announcement?
Just adjusted my computer screen.
Okay. All right. Contract with C O G for project management services. Was everybody able to review what McCray sent out? I was.
And I'm satisfied with the language.
It looks good.
Looks real good. So, um. We voted to join. We voted to send him a check. You don't need to vote. I think it's time to move forward. Do we have any discussion on it?
Can we make a decision to move forward in a work session, or do we need to wait until our next regular meeting?
I believe we made the decision in our last regular meeting, um, once the language was satisfactory to move on. If I recall correctly.
Ken, Brian has his hand up.
Brian.
I would object. Moving on, work sessions are not action items.
Anybody else?
I thought we already voted to join. And they've already cashed the check. Aren't we members?
Brian?
This is discussion of a contract. It's not about membership. This is approval of a contract, which specifically, as I sent an email earlier this year, the Department of Justice ruled that work sessions are not an appropriate place for the discussion of contracts, that they should be handled in a regular meeting that the public normally attends. That's why I object.
I thought that we had approved you actually signing this contract, Mr. Chair, as soon as we had the language worked out.
I agree. I thought we all were already done with this, you know, putting it off.
If there were minutes to show that, then I'd be glad to remove my objection.
McCray. Love that smile.
Hi, sorry. Uh, minutes from the nineteenth meeting? I feel like this was from August when you all discussed and we started dealing with the C I S issues and items.
We had to have insurance. We got the insurance. We've done everything possible, everything we wanted to do. I love these delays. Doesn't make a dang bit of sense.
I think to have it just in your regular, uh, board session meeting in two weeks from the COGS perspective is fine.
You're still doing work for us, so as long as you want to do work without a contract.
We provide services.
Yeah, we know.
All right.
Um, I can speak to. We have interviews on Wednesday, so.
Well, we better not discuss that. That's not on the agenda.
Could you tell us more about that, McCray? Um, do you guys, how many candidates do you have and who's on the interview panel?
We have three, um, candidates we're interviewing and it's COG staff. We have three COG staff, so it it's, you know, we'll see. We'll see if they're what we want to do now. If we want to have follow-up interviews or not.
Alrighty. We're just moving right along. Discussion of current board policies and procedures.
Well, yeah, guys, I was, I've been working on them, but I was worried I might have been overthinking them a little. Every sentence I was going, I seemed to have to stop and research. Um, right now, the way I was kind of going at it was I had, you know, the the Charter from Florence that Kelly was using as an outline. And then I had our current board policies and procedure, and I was trying to mash the formatting together. And so I think I just kind of kept getting stuck at the beginning. So I thought, hell, maybe we'll take it back to a work session, talk with you guys. I know we have our approved board policies and procedures. Um, so I think maybe if we circle back and we talk about any updates we need to make to the current one and then making those updates and then just simply putting heading, putting titles on that, and if that might be a better way to approach it.
I don't know, Larry. This looks really, really good. I, uh, you've done a great job. Um, I think it covers everything, and there's no reason why at any point we can't go ahead and say we need to revise something and open it up and do that. Um, great job.
I just think that, uh, it says in there, we meet on Thursday, and now we meet on Monday. That has to be changed. There's also and responsibilities. Eleven A, want everybody to understand, remember, remember may not re- represent any third party before an NSA board or commission. So that is just bringing that to everybody's attention, but the only thing that I can see, unless we want to go back to meeting on Thursdays. The only thing we have change is Monday. Turn it into Monday. That's about it. That's my personal opinion.
Well, and then, uh, one other thing that I'm still tracking was putting the, uh, any of the conflict of interest stuff. You know, I don't, I don't know if we want to have any changes. I know there was a lot of conflict of interest information that we took out of the financial policies because we had them in the board policies.
Which document are we looking at right now?
Uh, the one that was sent to you about the NSA board policies, procedures and decorum?
The one that came from Denny?
Didn't come from Denny.
No, I I didn't send anything about the, uh, current board policies.
I'm looking at one that was developed six twenty-one.
Yeah, these are the existing ones. These are the existing ones that we have now.
So which ones are you, which one are you referring to? Janet just was commenting on a document. Janet, which one were you referring to?
It was sent out with the agenda this, uh, for this meeting. Um, and my email's closed, so I can't get back into it. But it was.
It is just the twenty twenty-one, Janet. I don't know what you're seeing. It is the ones that are approved that we're looking at. I haven't made any changes.
Yeah, she, Janet made a comment that.
I'm confused. Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of, well. That are adopted, that we're operating.
This, this has already been voted on, already been adopted. There's changes being made. Also, we go down here for funding. The N S S A shall be funded in part by user fees. Just want to make sure that we're all volunteers. We're not going to get paid. That's my personal opinion.
Can I ask a point? What, what document are we reviewing? I know there's one in Google Docs that you've been working on, right, Larry?
We're reviewing the six twenty-one, the existing documents right.
Existing documents. Okay, could we start at the top then?
Yep.
Go for it.
Section one, one hundred. I would like a more complete description of membership.
Uh huh.
How do board members, it says board authority and board officers, but how do we generate board members? It should be explicit. I, I thought we, Tim had a good point last week of for last meeting regarding when a community can't fill its spots, what do we do? And I think that would be under board officers and board authority, you know, a description of where do we come from as board officers?
Well, I think that would be in the rework that Larry's gonna be working on.
One of those.
That's what she's asking right now that.
Tim, Tim talked about, uh, voting, um, majority.
So well, he also talked about how do we fill spots that have gone vacant for multiple months in a row?
Um, Tim, you didn't mention anything like that. I can't remember that.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit because, uh, we figured, I think, some way we could do an at-large membership for, for a spot that can't be filled, but the, the crux was, you know, we want to make sure that it doesn't get loaded up like, say, years down the road from now if if, uh, there's nobody in Idana wants to do it and nobody in Detroit wants to do it, do we have six voting members from Mill City? You know, so we, we gotta make sure our at-large members aren't loaded up with one community too. So I don't know. I don't think we team, we didn't resolve anything. I think we just touched on it.
And where do you see that fitting in, Tim?
Hold it. Excuse me, excuse me. Denny has already made contact with Idana to ask them.
Right.
And so I don't think we need to rush in and change everything at this time, my, my personal opinion. Um, so until we exhaust all avenues, you know, I don't see where there's any changes that we need to make right away.
Excuse me, Ken. I, I still think it's a reasonable point to, to have it explained where we come from in terms of two from each community and that we would resist, um, unless able to do otherwise. Having ad hoc members from other communities representing, um, in this case, it would be Idana or now that, uh, uh, Ron Carmichael has passed someone from, from Gates. So I don't think it would take more than a few sentences to describe what Brian has suggested and to add the, uh, the information about resisting the use of ad hoc members unless we're forced to do so. Larry, do you think that's a, a big deal in terms of wordsmithing?
I don't think so. So let's see, one one hundred, we could say resisting the use of ad hoc members. And so would saying, we don't want to have ad hoc members, they need to actually have an appointment and be sworn in by the rest of the members. Am I getting that right?
No, I, I think the, the point that Tim's making is, for example, Idana's been unable to fill a spot. They're working on it. I know that. That's, you know, that's understandable. But at some point, Tim's point last week was, you know, if we can't make a quorum because a community can't sustain membership, what can the board do to make sure that it has a full board? And Tim's point is, he doesn't really want it to be weighted by, you know, four gates people and, you know, four people from the other communities that there should be a process that we use, notification to the community, hey, we need somebody kind of quickly, please. And would you like us to appoint someone on our own? But I think more importantly, we should say where the officers come from. Each of the four communities have two representation spots on the board to be appointed by their city council. That's our processing gates. I don't know what they do in Detroit or Mill City or Idana, but that's the way we do it in.
The same in Detroit, Brian.
Right.
The members will be appointed by city council?
Correct.
And they have to, they have to send in, um, a letter saying they've been appointed. You have to send it into the N S S A. Go ahead.
A little food for thought is, uh, we could have a flexible board membership, say, from five to eight members, and then if it drops below that, then, you know, if it drops down to five or whatever, the board should look at appointing ad hoc members from any community, basically. But, uh, we would try and, you know, obviously encourage each city to have two representatives. So, you know, if, if that way, if a couple of people drop out or, or or are out of it for other reasons, whatever, uh, you know, it's not a emergency that we fill those positions because we don't lose quorum over.
Great idea, Tim.
Tim, you went on mute.
Have to have eight there all the time, uh, to make a quorum. You know, so if flexible membership, if we drop down to five, you know, then it only takes three to have quorum. I don't know, you're getting what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
Good point. Good point.
Okay, um, another question I have on here, um, do you guys have term limits on the chairperson, vice chairperson role? Like, um, does a chairperson want to have a term limit of like two consecutive years with vice chair having expectation of being next party to succeed? I think there's some pros and cons, like it could help ensure an adequate transition in leadership, but like the con, it can lack of historical knowledge and like also with this being a volunteer position, um, you know, we wouldn't want to run through chairs too quickly.
Well, right now it's set up for a year. We talked about two years, but for the chair, but it's, um, up to the board. Brian.
You know, I read, uh, kind of a previous version and I wasn't too keen on the direct succession approach. I think that could create some complications for a chair. You know, especially in our startup phase. But, so I wouldn't really be in favor of, of a succession kind of plan, but an annual vote or even a, uh, you know, a two-year term would be fine. I, I would be okay with that. And then a rotation after that by vote of the board. I think a two-year term is good because, you know, it, it gives a timeline for an individual and allows a vision to be developed and action to be taken by the board in a consistent format. Um, the downside is that, you know, a person life circumstances change, right? And they may not be able to complete a two-year segment, so. That's my input.
Janet.
I believe right now we do vote yearly for the position and the problem I can see with having term limits is, um, we don't get a lot of people stepping up um, for the leadership and I, I do think, um, with the turnover, we need to make sure that we all have our history behind us and we pass that along to whoever our successors are, so we don't lose what we've already got in place and have to reinvent the wheel every time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I feel, I feel the same way too. Um, you know, it's kind of up to you guys. Um, I personally think a term limit, I, I would lean more towards not having the term limit and then you guys voting, um, yearly, just because you know, I don't want to lose that history, but it, it really is your guys' call on this.
Well, my vote is, uh,
We can't vote, can't make a decision.
No, I'm just saying, my opinion is.
Okay.
But, you know, I guess the question is, do you guys want to put term limits to vote? But, you know, because that would just be if you guys feel the need to change now, you know, but that would be a deviation from the current operating procedures.
You can put it either way in there and we can discuss it at the next meeting. We can make a decision at the next meeting. Anything else in there?
Yep, let me just take this note. Um. Next one. I was looking at. Scrolling, scrolling. Okay, so for quarums, let's see a quorum, it let, read, read the note I have. A quorum is required for the NISA to hold a board work session. Should a quorum not be obtained at meeting start date, the NISA may adjourn a meeting to compel the attendance of absent members. Or if a quorum is not obtained within fifteen minutes of the scheduled start time, the meeting cannot take place and the meeting room needs to be vacated. And then a quorum is, so that's option one, is that the quorum is required for the NISA to hold board work session. And then option two for a quorum is, a quorum is desirable but not required for NISA to hold a board work session. Should a quorum not be obtained, the NISA shall note the lack of quorum and the digital recording in our meetings for the minutes shall dictate as such. So this is kind of the hot topic, right? Do we need to have a quorum for the work sessions?
Any comments? I mean, we, if we have to have a quorum every time we meet and we can't meet it, then we're wasting our time on work sessions.
A question.
Brian.
Well, I guess, you know, a quorum for a work session is definitely, I think it's necessary. But as a rule, we could write a rule that says it's not. But certain things cannot be discussed at a work session if a quorum is not present.
Mm-hmm.
Because having to go back and re-educate the individuals who weren't at the work session where a lot of work was done. And they had good reason for not being there. It wasn't, you know. So you can be a little bit flexible on that, but I would I would look at the statute and say, you know, what's good work session content and what should not be in a work session? And you've heard me say both tonight and previously that contracts should not be in a work session once they've been promulgated to a point of almost being completed. We want to discuss what the nature of a contract should look like in a work session. That's fair game to me. You know, where you're defining an R F P for services that you want to provide. I think that's, that's completely within a work session. But when you're looking at draft three or four of iterations of a contract, you should be doing that in a public meeting. That's my, my perspective.
Cool. Um, some of the language I think we could put in there, um, you know, basically is work sessions. You're permitting to, they're intended to allow for preliminary discussions and the NISA is not permitted to take formal or final action on any matter at a work session, so. Um, you know, I wonder if that language is, here, let me put it in in the chat so you guys can see it. What you guys think about this language in there? Oh, Janet, sorry, go ahead. I didn't see your hand up.
Uh, that's okay. I don't think the board would appreciate what I have to say. I'm gonna mute myself. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Well, you say thanks right now. We'll see what happens later.
Okay, let's see. Work sessions are intended to allow for preliminary discussions and the NISA is not permitted to take formal or final action on any matter at a work session. And so essentially that would just mean that a quorum is not required. Let's see, let me look at this draft. Let's see, and then this is another way to word it. I had a couple of them written down. You guys think. Here's another wording of it. Provided that the NISA is not permitted to take formal or final action on any matter at a work session, a quorum is not required for board work sessions or administrative work sessions.
Well, when I joined the board early in the year, in January, we had work sessions every other Friday down at the county. And we, uh, were diligent about assuring that there was not a quorum so that we could have a work session. And we had those regularly for some time. What has changed? Is it driven by statute or, or some other regulation that now says that we can't do what we did for all those months? And have a work session without a quorum and that we must have a quorum going forward in a work session or a regular meet. I mean, the regular meeting, I understand. The work session, I don't.
Brian.
I believe we called those administrative work sessions.
Well, it doesn't matter what you call them.
No, it does. It does, Denny. It does matter because those were meant, I, I think those were meant to work the board chair. And I think they were started under Danielle and continued under, uh, Sarah to be processed, you know, what, how are we doing on this? What, what do we need to do here? Um, how can we support you there? Those kind of elements. Um, and there were some reports from staff mainly to a couple of board members. And then more board members started to show up. So we transitioned, as I remember it, and correct me if I'm wrong, we transitioned to, well, if there's a quorum there, then it becomes a work session. So a work session can precede a regular meeting. You could have a work session for an hour and then go into a, a regular meeting for a second hour. But you can only do specific things in either camp. So it doesn't mean that you can't have them on the same night. Doesn't mean, you know, you should post separate agendas.
If it's a published meeting, if it's a published meeting and all public notices are properly posted and stuff, it's a public meeting. So a public meeting, we can do business in. I mean, I do it, uh, once a month myself because we have one meeting of our city councils that is focused on working on particular projects, but we can still do business and we can still take on items, action items, and we can still vote on them and pass them because it's properly published. Uh, I'm, I don't know why we want to tie our own hands to be able to keep from, uh, accomplishing things.
Tie our own hands to be able to keep from accomplishing things. Otherwise, why would we have a second meeting even? We don't even need to have a second meeting if we're gonna do it all in one. Meeting and only, only can move forward in one meeting. Uh, confusing that way to me, I, I mean, I go to a lot of meetings and not all of them are necessary.
I get your point, Tim, but the issue is at a work session, you can exclude the public.
But we're not excluding.
I understand that, I understand that, that's your, that's your choice, but you can't. That's why they're called work sessions. That's why the statute delineates between the two different types of meetings.
So why are we having a work session? What, we're wasting our time if we can't get anything done?
Let's just call them meetings then.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm tired of wasting time, I'm tired of being hamstrung. We either are just gonna have one a month. And get things done and move forward.
Or we can just call it two regular meetings too, if we're gonna publish them anyway and advertise.
How did we make it six years? How did we do this in six years? I just don't get it.
The League of Oregon Cities offers really good training and.
We made it six years. We had Marion County behind us, we had them all behind us. And we all did it and we all worked together as one and we did it. And we, we, we never got held up whatsoever. And now we're just keep getting held up. We can't get anything done.
What's the purpose, you, you state in your protocol, we state right in B, the purpose of a work session. The only thing that I think. Is wrong is that these meetings. The last line is contradictory. These meetings are informational and no formal action shall be taken. Unless the posted agenda indicates otherwise. In all my years of creating agendas for board meetings under Oregon Public Meeting Law. You could not take action in a work session. It was prohibited.
Well, we can't have.
So that's twelve years of meetings every month. So the essence of a work session is for training. For discussing things in depth and focused without the interruption of your public. That's the whole idea behind a work session.
They never.
Discussions of this set of policies like this is perfect for a work session.
We're gonna.
Larry goes back and she works on the product. And at the next board meeting, it's up for approval. Because we discussed it.
Fine.
Right, I think, I think the only change in language we could put in there is just, you know, that like. A quorum is not required, you know, because we've been operating on these same board policies, right? And if we think that a quorum, you know. Because I don't think we have. You know, like necessarily, we're not stepping out of the boundaries to where we're taking formal action. I think we still recognize the difference between. You know, the informal action and formal action, but do we just not want to require a quorum for these work sessions?
I guess is the question, what's the purpose of the quorum?
I see this as something that's gonna slow us down. I say we just cut quick on them work sessions and call them meetings.
That's what I'm writing down for the next topic. That's what I'm writing down for the next topic.
Because we can discuss them all we want in a regular meeting too. I mean, just like a work session. We don't go forward with an action, but I think if we're gonna get mired down in the language, calling them a work session that we're just hamstringing ourselves. And making it so that we can't, if we have some, something that we need to move forward on, we can't. Just a simple language thing that we just change in what we call the meeting.
So we're not gonna call them a work session?
We can't make decisions, we can't make decisions. You're gonna have to word it both ways.
I would.
So that's gonna make more work for you. So what we'll put on the agenda when we get ready to do to the agenda, we're gonna vote on. Eliminating work sessions, because it's a waste, my personal opinion, it's a waste of time.
Well, if we, if we don't have to have quorums, then we can do. Basically, two or three people can talk about it as long as there's not a quorum. Anyway, so we just, if you wanna have a special project to work on, two or three people can get together at a time. And. Talk about something. That, a limb that, that works around the, the quorum issue and I say we just have two regular meetings a month. And we can vote on stuff and if there's nothing going on for them, we cancel the meeting, because lord knows I don't need to. Attend meetings that nothing's going on.
We can't move forward, it's, it's waste of our time.
All right, what do you guys think? Vote on elimination of work sessions, just say two regular meetings a month.
Shoot for consensus, so Larry knows which way to, to roll with this.
I think she's interpreting the mood of the board correctly.
Okay, so we're gonna say, we're, you know, we're just gonna rename them. You know, we can just change that on the schedule, right? Just say. Vote on elimination of work sessions and just say we have two regular meetings a month and those require quorums.
A second meeting is to, to be determined.
Other type of meeting, well, we could still call it the administrative work session, right?
No, no work session.
I, I would, you know, if, if it's something, there's nothing going on and we don't have a quorum or whatever. I would think our board chair would say, we don't have anything, so let's cancel this next meeting.
Very true.
Don't want to be required to have the meetings that says we can have two meetings. We're definitely required, we should be required. As a board to have at least one. But the second meeting. We just want it so that we can move forward quickly and that's the whole idea of adding this extra meeting. Was so that we could respond quickly to things rather than waiting one month at a time. Between meetings to, to be able to move forward.
As you know, Tim, and remember that we're, we're only supposed to have four meetings a year, one every quarter. And we moved to work sessions so we could move forward, so we could get things done. Now that we can't think, get things done, we can't vote, can't make decisions. Can't do anything, we just talk about it. We can do the same thing in a regular meeting. I totally agree. We just have a regular meeting. Two of them and the second one in the middle of the month. My personal opinion will be. Determined.
As the board chair, you set the agenda, so if there's nothing for the agenda items, then it just gets canceled.
I see Brian's hands up.
So. I don't. I don't know whether it's, you're speaking cynically or not, but the reality of a work session. Is to give Larry. An opportunity to hear what we're saying and create a document. That when we come back to our regular meeting is pretty well polished. And we approve it on first reading. That's, that's where we're at. You know, we might say. Oh, we've read it all through, could we make this little tweak and this little tweak and bring it back? Next month for final reading. That's the idea of a work session.
We understand.
To, I would be. I think it's short sighted to remove work session. From the types of meetings that we could use because it might be helpful in the future. But.
And we can add it.
But, but here's my take on it though. We can do everything in a regular meeting that we could do in a work session. But we can't do in a work session what we can do in a regular meeting. So one of them gives us full gamut and the other ties our hands.
That's why one is way more common than the other. But there, there are times when you may want somebody to come from. Special districts, let's say, and do a training for us on. Uh, what a special sewer district would it look like? Talk us through all of the elements. Tell us why it might be better than this type of structure and that kind of thing. Where we sit, we get informed and we understand, we're not making any decision. But we are gonna go in the. Future and write a policy about that.
Then we can have a work session.
But we, but we could, we could do that very thing in a regular meeting.
Absolutely.
You, you could, but.
I don't see why we're splitting hairs. If, if, if we don't want to make a decision at one of our regular meetings, then we don't make a decision and we simply. Evolve a policy or an issue to a level that we can deal with it at the following meeting, but at least this way. If we want to act, if there's something that is polished to the point that we. Could act and should act and we have the, the ability to do so. I think Tim is spot on.
One way gives us all the advantage we want, the other ties our hands, so we just go with regular meetings twice a month. One of them, we will just know and we could put, it doesn't have to be put in a policy, we just know that is the. It's the add-on meeting that we, if there's nothing on the agenda, I would hope that our, our. Our board chair would cancel that meeting because there's no items to report on, no items to work on. I don't see that happening for a few months, maybe in a couple of years, but I would think that, you know, this is a policy going forward.
Well, we could eliminate the, the IGA if we could have just. Said okay to go sign it, we could eliminate that, put something else on there, but now we have to have that on there just so we can. Vote for three minutes, but.
I agree with you. I think that's, that is the preferred approach.
I, I think the two meetings is perfect.
Maybe we could have a compromise where, you know, the honor, we have our calendar, right? And once a month we have our board session and once a month we have our board work session. We don't eliminate like the work session or admin work session under it, because then it won't restrict us from happening, having one if we want. But we could just amend the calendar so that way our board work session that we have just become regular board sessions.
Because there's. There's another thing that I need to talk to McCray about. Is when you're sending out. The work session. There are so many email addresses on the work session. And they don't want to be notified of the work session. They, they know it's going to be there, they're not going to attend. And when you have a regular meeting, yes, they want and they know when the regular meeting is. So you send out the emails to all of them. So there's certain emails for a work session and certain emails. For a board meeting. I think we are wasting time. On not having two meetings, this work session thing and not being able to make decisions, we've made them before. We've made them years after years after years, we make decisions, we move forward, but now we can't. I, you know, if, I, I haven't been arrested.
Well, that doesn't mean you've been doing it right, Ken. Help you understand.
Complaints, Brian, nobody is complaining, nobody.
That's because nobody attends our meetings. The issue really is. Why did, why did the legislature write that into statute? And if you have, if you want to bag on government, Ken, go ahead, bag on government, but.
No, no.
Legislature wrote that into statute to protect the public.
Brian, we're going to change it. I, I personally believe we should change.
I have no problem changing our session.
And vote on it one way or another.
It's on the agenda, I'm gonna put it on the agenda, so we.
I like Tim's recommendation, but I would also caution you. Not to take work session out, just leave it in there. There's no harm in leaving it in there.
Well, that's what Larry stated a few minutes ago was to not eliminate it and have it there as an option if needed.
I agree, I agree with that.
There is an option as needed and we'll just, we can eliminate the quorum for work session. Then, and just say if we have a quorum, if we know we're gonna have a quorum, then we'll just call it a board session. And would we want the flexibility, you know, if we, uh, no, I guess because it with the public notice.
You can't change it, you can't, when, once you put in a work session and then all of a sudden you have a quorum, you can't just change it.
Well, could we just say we could call it a board session and if we're at the board session and we don't have a quorum, it becomes a work session and we can't make. Actionable decision?
You're gonna have to word it on the agenda when you post it. And when you're posting it, you gotta have it a certain way. So if you, if you're posting it as a, a board meeting, it has to be a board meeting.
It's a look at the statute and see what it says.
I, I, I see what Larry said, I think I'm seeing what Larry's saying.
I've seen it too.
We advertise as a board meeting, both of them, we advertise them as board meetings. However, at that meeting, the second meeting of the month. If we do not have a quorum of board members, then it automatically just becomes a work session. So that people can still discuss issues, they just can't take any action. Right, so they are both advertised as just a regular meeting. And quite honestly, we've done that at city council before where we don't have a quorum show up. We just know, and we actually don't even open it as a meeting. We are able to discuss items because there is no quorum. But we don't take any action on any items, we don't dispend, we don't do anything towards. A decision. So that's, that's the deal, you can't make any, any discussion towards the decision. Just what it is that you're working on or whatever, information only mostly, so. I say we just make them meetings. We just make.
Say, uh, we could just change that language to say, you know, like at a board session, should a quorum not be reached? It becomes a board work session where there can be no actionable decision.
You can say that, I suppose.
And not that, not that we need to dismiss the meeting.
Right, yeah, and, and that way we're just, that way people still. Talk about stuff that needs to be done or something, but they won't. Discuss towards actually, towards a decision or making a decisions.
So how do you, how do you? Deal with the Friday meetings where a quorum would be present?
Like the administrative work sessions where, well. It would still be a, they would all just be board meetings, right?
Eliminate Friday meetings.
I'd say eliminate the Friday meeting unless we, if it's needed, we call an emergency meeting and we advertise it.
I think it's a waste of time.
You can have, you can have a meeting, uh, uh, if you went back to the protocol that you were using with Sarah and. And Debbie Gonzalez. You can have, you can have two board members meet with staff and work on projects, that's. That's just an administrative meeting. It's just people who are supervising employees doing work. That's not, there's nothing wrong with that. It's productive, it could get draft versions of these. Uh, procedures and all in place and knocked out, so when it comes to a regular meeting. It's had some board influence in it, it's had some staff influence and the process goes much quicker. That's what committees are for.
Janet, we're in a circular conversation. I think we've already agreed that everything that's just been said is what we want to do. So let's just put it on the agenda for the next meeting and vote on it.
Yep. Janet, you got your hand up.
Two questions, if we're gonna do the Friday meeting, who makes the decision on the two board members that were there? We had that covered and we had just two board members there and then suddenly everybody showed up. And we had to change it, so that's question one. Question two, we end up changing a board session to a work session. Who makes the decision on what we do or don't get to talk about? Because what I see happening is a lot of the stuff. Is delayed because we don't have enough people there to talk about it. I thought that if we got everything in place and then took it to the board session. From these meetings and everybody had a chance to review it, they have their time ahead of time. So who makes the decision and how is that decided? Because if we're, we're gonna do this. I honestly, I'm not gonna waste my time. Going to a meeting where probably nobody's gonna show and then we're gonna have to cancel the meeting, especially if I'm doing them in a remote location. Because you're talking a half hour to set up, you're talking a half hour to clean up, if anybody bothers to show. Yeah, those are my questions. And yes, I. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're just gonna put it on the agenda, we're gonna vote on it next meeting. This is just. I think Larry. Is on board with what changes. Should be made, is there anything else, Larry?
Let me see what else we got, oh. Let's see. I guess I had another one of those. Do we want to continue to have admin work sessions as board sessions? Pro, it ensures all members of the NISA who wish to attend are able to. Pro, it ensures all members of the NISSA who wish to attend are able to. Con, requires staff time for ensuring. Meeting meets pub, public meeting law requirements. So it was just more so like, does administrative work sessions, should we have them meet the public meeting law requirements?
Uh, we can't make any decisions at this, this time and we'll have to vote it on our next meeting. So really you're stuck. Right now, Larry, for really, if you can move forward on some of the items other than the meetings, that's fine. But, uh, Brian.
I guess my opinion on that, Larry, is that if the administrative meetings were focused to one. Or two topics where only one or two board member. Needed to be there because that was kind of their sphere of influence. For example, Denny and communication plan. That's how you would determine who needs to attend the meeting. And that narrow. Item would define the agenda. That way, no other board member would need to be there. That's Danny's ball to carry. He can do it. He can sit and meet with you, talk with you one-on-one. Plan out where it's gonna go in the scope of work over time. And that's the purpose of an administrative work session where staff and board members focus on an element. Drill down in it, create the picture for the rest of the board members. To see in the meeting. And, and vote upon.
Okay. No quorums for admin work session?
No, no, no. But limited participation. I think Janet's right.
We're gonna have to.
Who goes, who goes, who goes? That's, that's a, that's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it was set up long ago.
I don't know why it changed, but it, it did. Maybe because people were so new to the board, they wanted to get some insight into what was going on.
Well, historically, what occurred from my perspective is that we were having these administrative work sessions. With three board members and staff represented. And all of a sudden, there was another board member who showed up. They thought they might be missing something and they became a regular attender. And that's when we started having the concerns related to a quorum being present. So I think we've come full circle. I like where we've sort of landed on with having two regular meetings. And a works and administrative work session if an issue pops up that needs. Some sort of work prior to a, you know, a following regular meeting.
You know, I think we've got our direction set for us and to have all these extra meetings. For us volunteers. I don't want to waste my time. I want to be productive. We'll vote on it. We'll vote on it next meeting. But if Larry wants to put that in there, um, we can review it. I appreciate what she's doing. Anything else, Larry?
No, other than that, just, um, you know, I was just kinda like redlining some stuff like for migrating in the conflict of interest. But otherwise, no, unless you guys have, you know, any other concerns that you guys saw coming up in the existing board policies. Really, that was kinda just the big question in the room was surrounding quorums and work sessions, which I think we hashed out pretty good. Yep, Brian?
You're muted, Brian.
Dang. Brian, you're muted.
My apologies. Why is it that we don't use the consent agenda?
I don't have an answer. What do we have to put on a consent agenda if we don't discuss anything in the work sessions? And everything has to be discussed in the board meeting itself. It doesn't make any sense to have a consent agenda. If that's what we're doing. Personal.
Treasures reports could, could go in a consent agenda. You could put the minutes from previous meetings in the consent agenda. Unless somebody wants to pull them out and, and speed along our meetings, so we wouldn't have, uh. You know, getting clogged up in motions and seconds for this and for that, instead of just using the consent agenda.
We'll have two meetings.
Second readings of, uh, policy documents like this could be placed in the consent agenda, so. Just a question.
We're gonna get a shovel in the ground one of these days. Guarantee it.
Oh, hey, yeah. By the way, I wanted to give you guys a little update on Keller. Speaking of trying to get shovels in the ground, I heard a little bit from Public Works, Brian Nicholas. Uh, the contract is live with Keller. Um, they're looking to do a little bit of community outreach in Detroit here pretty soon with the city council. So we're gonna start seeing some public outreach coming. And then here pretty soon, we're gonna start getting the project meetings, like the regularly scheduled project meetings going. And right after that, we'll start getting, uh, design coordination meetings. So. Things are rolling. If you guys feel the need to go, reach out to Peter and you all have his emails, you guys can say hello. Um, we're able to talk to him now. Um, that color's live.
I really think Peter ought to be left alone. He's gonna have to get started. He's gonna be slammed here for the next couple of months. Uh, I hope the board members understand, don't contact him, uh, until we invite him to a meeting. Um, he's busy.
Hmm.
Very busy. So, uh, we leave that with Marion County, um, Brian Nicholas. Um, but he's gonna be busy.
Cool. Yeah, and I think he said, uh, maybe three or four weeks out. That's when he, um, wanted to go to do some outreach in Detroit.
Yeah.
And then we'll see his face coming.
Well, we'll get this, we'll get this contract signed. Uh, we'll get the, uh, pull, uh. The board policies done and, um. When, when is, uh, Denny?
Larry, next time you have a conversation with Brian Nicholas, um, can you make sure that, um, we understand what's occurring with the staff person? Uh, that's a part of that con, contract that's gonna be involved in community outreach. I think we need to, A, meet the person, B, have a clear understanding of what their purpose is and how they intend to execute on their responsibility. Brian was at our, uh, city council meeting at Mill City a week ago. Uh, but his comments were extremely general and the, you know, to some level they were helpful, but. Uh, they didn't, they didn't put a lot of flesh on the bones. And I, and, and there's still a lot of rumors floating around about the potential for, uh, the county working deals with, uh, Kane's Resort. For example, for using a five thousand dollar, uh, five thousand gallon tank to be bumped and paid for by the city of, of Detroit. That sort of thing. And, um, it's important that we minimize this, um. Conversation that, that seems to develop out of no real sources at all. But it gets legs faster than anything you can imagine. So, um. Understanding who's gonna be responsible from Keller, how, as in my position with the NSA, how I can interact with that person on a regular basis. And begin to formalize, um. More acutely what we've, what we've developed fundamentally for community outreach so far.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm writing it.
All right. We're, we're approaching the hour. And, uh. We got a lot to do at our next meeting and, um.
Ryan's got his hand up, Ken.
Brian.
So. You know, I know, Danny. Is your position, can, do you consider it an elected position or not?
No, it's appointed.
Okay, so. But you're the spokesperson for the NSA.
Well, uh, I think you were the one that, uh, informed me about that at one of my first meetings. I had no idea what the responsibility really was until you started to tease out what those responsibilities were. And I started to look more carefully at what I'd said okay to. So, um.
Well, I, I only say that because, you know, in our, in this document here, it says. The NSA chair is the official spokesperson for NSA on all matters. And then it goes on to say unless absent in the vice chair. And I'm wondering if the board should consider that communications an actual position. Or. Because it seems a little clumsy at this point, whether you're the spokesperson or with Ken's the spokesperson. And in the absence of Ken, it's Tim or is it Denny? So maybe that needs to be. Kinda thought about a little bit and reflected in the procedures document.
So if Danny has made the spokesperson and somebody asked me a question, I can't answer it and I have to refer them to Danny?
Well.
It's called the official, the official spokesperson, right? The official, which means. That's what you wrote in your policies and procedures and decorum. I'm just reading what you guys wrote. I'm not. It's.
Well, I think, I think it's a reasonable point, Brian. Um. You know, for me, and I have worked with various boards for decades and decades. We're, even though some of you have been involved in this for 10 years, we're still a pretty young organization in terms of what we're gonna be when we grow up. And I would think that all of us are gonna work with the chair. I mean, I'm certainly not gonna go out and do anything unless the chair. You know, is, is clearly aware of my intent and the content of what I intend to communicate within the communities. Uh, and I think we can just act informally, but it wouldn't hurt to codify that, uh, in, in those, um. Board policies either if, it's just that, you know, we can layer this stuff to the point where it takes somebody days to read it instead of a, you know, an hour. And, and I just want to make sure we're functional, um, in, instead of being. What I refer to is, is steeped in bureaucrat.
I, I agree with you. So what do you do if a newspaper reporter calls you? For the position of the NSA on a certain thing? Do you give them Ken's phone number or do you speak?
No, I speak. I, I proceed.
So you're the official, that's.
My style.
That's it.
And, and Ken and I have a, a close enough relationship and I hope I have that with each and every one of you. But I'm not gonna step on anybody's sensitive anatomy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I think needs to be done in the best interest of our communities. And, uh, and I think unless we all do that, we're just gonna, we're, we're, we're gonna be mired in bureaucrat. Instead of, instead of acting, uh, as community representatives, we're not paid. If I was getting paid a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars to you to do this, I wouldn't mind all the policies and procedures in the world. But until somebody from the state, the DOJ or whoever comes and grabs me by the collar. You know, I'm gonna do what I think is correct and I'm gonna make sure my, my chair clearly understands, um. My approach, my style and the content of, of what I intend to communicate.
And I think that's a great approach. I agree with that. The question I had is in the last article about the NSA. They didn't know. The mayor of Detroit is speaking for the NSA.
Yeah.
So what, so I guess the question is, if we're gonna reach out to a news organization to make sure they call one of us. For what is the NSA doing? Who are we directing them to?
Yeah.
Well, we getting just, this is getting.
That's in your document, Ken.
We have all been representatives of the NSA. Everybody's been asked questions. We've all been, we.
That's true.
Well, if they.
I agree with it.
I don't want to answer, then I send them to Ken.
Good approach.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm in front of the commissioners. I'm in front of the. I'm in front of the commissioners.
If it's a simple question, I can answer, but if it's, it's anything, you know, uh, I'll send it on.
We're, you used to be such a happy family. What's going on? Um, all right, we're here at the, we're at seven twelve. Is there anything else? Because we're over our hour. And we're gonna end this. Anything else? Um. McCray, Larry, Tim, Brian, Denny.
Um, so we got through page five of this document. Is that right?
No, we're, we're.
I think Larry said.
No, I, I had all the questions. I had the questions asked that I need to. I, I had my questions written down.
Yeah, and so she's gonna bring something back. We'll discuss it and, and make our decisions at the next one at our formal meeting. Uh, and, um. We have, we're, we're past our hour and it's time to end this meeting. Appreciate everybody coming on.
Well, I, I just want to let you guys know I'm out of town for the next two weeks. So just, uh, you know, direct all questions to McCray or Kelly.
You go fun.
Huh?
Have fun. That's where I'm going.
Am I going where?
Elk hunting too.
Elk hunting? No, I'm going to, uh, Argentina, actually.
Oh, guy.